I'd like to call to order the Spark City Council meeting of July 14, 2014. With a roll call, please.
Mayor Martini.
Here.
Councilmembers Ratty.
Here.
Lawson.
Here.
Smith.
Here.
Kerrigan.
Here.
Schmidt.
Here.
City Attorney Adams.
Here.
City Manager Driscoll.
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Okay, our clocks are not working for some reason, so my electronic device says it's two o'clock, so we did call to order at two o'clock. Next is the invocation, if you'd all stand for the invocation by Rajan Zed, President of the University Society of Hinduism.
I will read from ancient Sanskrit scriptures, in Sanskrit and translated into English. Om Bhur Bhuvahasvaha, Tatsavitarvaranyam Vargodivastidimahi Diyo Yona Prajodhyat. We meditate on the transcendental glory of the deity supreme, who is inside the heart of the earth, inside the life of the sky, and inside the soul of the heaven. May he stimulate and illuminate our minds. Astoma Sadgamyam, Tamsoma Jyotirgamyam, Mritiyor Mamratamgamyam. Lead us from the unreal to the real. Lead us from darkness to light. Lead us from death to immortality. Nityatam Kurukarmastum Karma Jayavaya Karmana, Shriyayatra Apichatena Prasiddhiyad Karmana, Jagnathad Karmanao Niatra Lokoyam Karma Bandhana, Tadartham Karma Kountya Mukta Sangsamachara. Fulfill all your duties. Action is better than inaction. Even to maintain your body, you are obliged to act. Selfish action imprisons the world. Act selflessly without any thought of personal profit. Dusmadasakta Statham Kareem Karma Samachara, Asaktohaya Charan Karma Parma Bhanoti Purusha Karma Nevahi Samshidi, Mastita Jankadeya, Loka Sangreha Mevapi, Sampa Shankar Tumrahasi. Strive constantly to serve the welfare of the world. By devotion to selfless, one attains the supreme goal of life. Do your work with the welfare of others always in mind. Om Sahana Vabhu Sahana Vabhu Sahaviryan Karva Bahayit Jasvinava Dita Mastu Maavitrisa Bahai. May we be protected together, may we be nourished together, may we work together with great vigor, may we study enlightenment, may no obstacle arise between us. Samneva Akutis, Samna Hirdhyaniva, Samnamastu Vomano, Yatha Vasu Sahasti. United your resolve, united your hearts, may your spirits be at one, that you may long together dwell in unity and conquered. Om Shanti, 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 peace, peace, peace be unto all. Om. Thank you.
Thanks Rajan. Remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Mr. Schmidt, would you lead us?
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a third being just as small.
I've got a couple, Rajan, I've got a couple more things to do and then we'll get to your proclamation.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, next is comments from the public. Anyone in the public want to speak under comments from the public? I have no speaking cards, okay. Next is the approval of the agenda. Anybody want to take anything out of order? Not looking for a motion. Mr. Smith.
Moved to approve.
Mr. Lawson.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve the minutes or to approve the agenda. Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I think they were pulling an item.
Yeah, we can do that. We can do that, okay. So, go ahead and amend it then.
Okay, I amend the approval of the minutes, or, no, I'm sorry, the agenda with the exception of pulling 7.2.
Okay. Second are okay?
Yep.
Okay, everyone understand the motion? Seeing none, further discussion, vote. Passage unanimously. Next is consideration for possible approval of minutes of the regular Spark City Council meeting for June 23, 2014, the special meeting of June 19, 2014, and the city council workshop of June 9, 2014. Any omissions or corrections? Mr. Lawson.
Moved to approve.
Ms. Ratty.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Lawson, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty to approve the minutes as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Okay, let's move on to announcements and presentations, and I have a proclamation that's not on the agenda and with the indulgence of the council, I'd like to read it. If Mr. Zed could come on up, please. I don't know how many of you know about Rajan Zed and what he does for religions throughout, not only Washoe County, but throughout the United States and throughout the world. He's been a renowned speaker in many, many places throughout the United States and the world. He's been to Congress and the United States Senate twice and opened those particular bodies with a Hindu prayer, which was the first time that's ever been done. And on his own time, he goes around the western United States and wherever in the United States and opens up city councils and county commissions and those kind of things with Hindu prayers, the first time that they've ever been there. He's also very involved with a multi-faith unit here in Reno Sparks, which do a lot of good to bring all the faiths together. You know, if we could do that throughout the world, I think we'd be way, way ahead of all the religious wars and battles and all those things we have. His people and the people he worked with in the multi-faith units here in the city of Sparks in Reno do a tremendous job, so I'd like to commend Rajan with reading in proclamation. Whereas in honor of Rajan Zed's delivering the invocation in the United States House of Representatives in Washington DC on June 19, 2014, and whereas to honor Rajan Zed's reading of the first historical Hindu prayer of the United States Senate in Washington DC in 2007, and regarding opening and reading opening prayers in the state, senate states of Washington, Oregon, Nevada, California, Arizona, Utah, Colorado, New Mexico, India, Alaska, state assemblies, House of Representatives of Oregon, Nevada, Arizona, Colorado, Indiana, Alaska, city councils of Phoenix, San Jose, Las Vegas, Fresno, Bakersfield, Anaheim, Hartford, Connecticut, also Sparks, Nevada, of course, in addition to various other city councils in California, Nevada, Utah, Maryland, Virginia, and the county commissions boards in California, Nevada, and Utah. And whereas to honor Rajan Zed's efforts to help the Hindu committees, communities spread throughout the United States and the world, and whereas to honor Rajan Zed's initiatives to bring various religious communities together throughout the world so that they can live in peace and mutual trust and enrich themselves through dialogue. And whereas to honor Rajan Zed's work to uplift about 15 million Roma, Gypsies, people of Europe who live in apartheid conditions by frequently voicing their maltreatment issues and concerns and urging other religious leaders to do so. And whereas to honor Rajan Zed's leadership role in attempting to help the helpless, to honor him in receiving the World Interfaith Leader Award. And whereas to honor Rajan Zed's leading of interfaith panel, Faith Forum, in the Reno Gazette Journal for the last three years, thus bringing diverse religious leaders on a single platform to harmoniously discuss important and complex faith issues. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, do hereby proclaim October 25, 2014, as Rajan Zed Day. Come on, everybody. Come on up. A lot of photo ops today, boys, girls. Thanks, Rajan. Appreciate it. Appreciate your work.
Thank you, Senator.
Julia, you want to read the Girl Scout thing?
I'd love to.
There's two of them, but they both say the same thing, so, and both names are mentioned in both of them, so yeah, I'll just read one. Okay, next is a presentation and commendation on homeless teens and Project 150. Come on up, girls. And I guess I'll let Julia introduce these people, these girls?
Well, I'm going to actually, because part of what we practice is presenting ourselves, I'm going to let them introduce themselves.
Do whatever you think is right there, kid.
Okay, so hi, good afternoon. My name's Irene.
And I'm Gwen.
And we're working on our Silver Award, which is raising awareness about homeless teenagers in Nevada and the whole United States and the world.
We're good, Mary.
Is the music good?
Okay, so like I said, we're Girl Scouts and we're in troop, 14, troops 14, that's me, and 723, that's Gwen, and we're working on our Silver Award, which is the second highest award in Girl Scouting. For our project, we're raising awareness about homeless teenagers in Nevada. Not many people know just how bad homelessness is, and Nevada has one of the highest rates of homelessness, and it's something that we're trying to fix.
What is homelessness? Many people think of homelessness as being out on the streets, but for homeless teens, couch surfing, living at a friend or family's member's house, and living on the streets means homelessness. In fact, anyone living in a non-adequate space is considered homeless.
Like we said, our project is focusing on homeless teenagers, students and teens our age, so like 12 and 13, and older. There's many reasons for teenage homelessness. Many have run away from foster homes or have aged out of the foster program. Most are running away from emotional, physical, or sexual abuse and have nowhere to go. This is one of the main problems faced by homeless teenagers. A number are homeless because of their substance abuse, due to problems at home or school, they turn to drugs or alcohol, and sometimes it's the parents that are abusing the substances causing the teens to run away. Another huge, often overlooked problem is that a child's sexuality can cause parents to kick their children out.
Causes of homelessness. There's not one specific cause or step that leads to homelessness, but a mix of different things. According to estimates from the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, a family with a full-time worker making minimum wage could not afford fair market rent for a two-bedroom apartment anywhere in the US.
The lack of affordable housing is one of the biggest factors behind homelessness.
Natural and other disasters can throw people into temporary homelessness.
Unexpected job loss can also cause families to lose their home.
Nationally, 50% of homeless women and children are fleeing domestic violence.
Veterans are a specific demographic when it comes to homelessness because they experience disabilities caused by their experience on the battlefield, like physical injuries, post-traumatic stress, and mental suffering. And they're just a few of the wartime after-effects that drive the population of homeless veterans.
68% of US cities report that addiction is their single largest cause of homelessness.
So here's just some extra facts about homelessness. As of 2007, 68 out of every 10,000 residents were homeless in Nevada. That's a higher proportion than any other state.
A majority of homeless people are staying in emergency shelters or transitional housing, but 38% are unsheltered, living on streets or in cars, abandoned buildings or other places not intended for human habitation.
In alphabetical order, Alaska, California, Colorado, Hawaii, Idaho, Nevada, Oregon, Rhode Island, Washington State, and Washington DC have the highest rates of homelessness.
According to children in transition, there are about 1.35 million homeless students.
And in Washoe County School District, almost 3,000 homeless students.
Project 150 is a nonprofit charitable organization founded in December 2011 by two Nevada natives who heard of 150 homeless students at Rancho High School in Las Vegas. Since then, Project 150 has provided food, clothing, school supplies, sports equipment, shoes, and other special requests to over 1,100 homeless displaced disadvantaged high school students. They are currently serving 34 high schools in Las Vegas, two high schools in Reno, and will add additional schools as they grow and as schools allocate resource rooms. We're working with Project 150 by providing them with most of our donations. Hopefully, we will soon be helping them set up rooms in high schools around the area.
And I don't know if we said this, but what Project 150 does is set up rooms in high schools, kind of like PE rooms, but instead of PE equipment, they have food, they have clothing, they have things that homeless students would need. We also want to talk about children in transition. We took a trip to visit Children in Transition, also called CIT, to learn about what they do and how they help homeless students. Their goals are to provide academic support for students, find out how many homeless students there are, and provide them with what they need. CIT normally starts a school year with about 600 to 800 homeless students in Washoe County School District, and by the end of the year might end up with as many as 3,000. They serve kids ages zero through graduation. This includes all forms of homelessness: couch surfing, double-up families, people living in motels, and more. CIT worked closely with school counselors to figure out which children are homeless, how many of them there are, and how CIT can help. Teen parents, runaways, unaccompanied children, or teens, or kids living with anybody who is not a legal guardian is automatically considered a child in transition.
And we included some ways that the public could help. Just knowing about homelessness can help. Many Americans are misinformed or under-informed about homelessness. There are many programs out there dedicated to informing the public about what homelessness is like. You can also donate clothing, food, and other items to a local shelter, take a tour of a local shelter, or volunteer. You can also present this PowerPoint to any local organizations, if anyone's interested.
We just want to end this by saying, we're two young girls and we've, I mean, we're presenting to you guys here, and so anybody can make a difference and anybody can, you know, really help their community.
Thank you. Don't leave, have a seat. We have something else for you. Have a seat. Go ahead, Julia.
Thank you. I know many of you are aware of my affiliation with the Girl Scouts of the Sierra Nevada, but I did want to mention today that I did not know that we would have a Silver Award presentation here today until I opened up the agenda myself, and I want to say that because I want to recognize your initiative, and I'm sure that we're not the only organization that you're making a presentation to, and Girl Scouting, rediscover, connect, and take action, and so clearly you've done a whole lot of work on discovering and figuring out how you can take action in your community, so congratulations. I would like to read this commendation for you. Whereas Nevada has one of the highest rates of homelessness in America, and among those homeless are 1.35 million students with nearly 3,000 homeless students in our own Washoe County School District, and whereas those homeless teens are at a critical crossroads in completing their educations, with many suffering from emotional, physical, or sexual abuse, drug or alcohol addiction, sexual orientation, or teen pregnancy, while also experiencing the many challenges of just being a teenager, and whereas it is the goal of Project 150 to provide food, clothing, school supplies, sports equipment, shoes, and other special requests to homeless, displaced, and disadvantaged high school students, and whereas it is the specific goal of students Guinevere McDonald, and Irene DeHaan, to educate the community about homeless teenagers in our region, what causes homelessness among teens, and how the community can come to the aid of this often forgotten group. Now therefore I, Gino R. Martini, Mayor of the City of Sparks, Nevada, join with the city council to commend the efforts of Irene DeHaan and Gwen McDonald as they strive to earn the Girl Scout Silver Award through collaboration with Project 150 and educating our community about homeless teens. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And I'm going to ask that you do the picture, Mayor, because they can have a picture with me pretty much anytime they want. [laughing] Oh, sorry. Yep.
Thanks. Anytime. Anytime. Can I have something here to take pictures for you?
The paparazzi in the back.
Good stuff. This is the kind of young people that we like to see come before the council. So many times we read about all the bad kids and the stuff that they do and everything, but we never have time in our papers to admire or to put forward what these young people do and how many good young people we have in our community, so again, thank you so much, appreciate it. Okay, next is a presentation on community involvement with Parks and Recreation Department. Tracy.
Good afternoon, Mayor Martini and council members. My name is Tracy Dominguez, Parks and Recreation Director, and that was a great presentation. Good job, girls. It's not easy getting up here. So, I'm before you today to, partly because July is National Parks and Recreation Month, and I'm going to, on an annual basis, take opportunity of this month to acknowledge the many people and partners that we have to make our programs and parks what they are today. We couldn't do it without them. We continue to encourage the community to get involved through a variety of programs with assistance from service clubs, scout troops, Eagle Scouts, businesses large and small, local foundations, citizens, and nonprofit organizations. The City of Sparks Parks and Recreation Department has been able to maintain valuable community assets. A program called Partners in Parks and Recreation has paved the way for groups to come forward with support for Sparks. It also provides a great opportunity to give something that will benefit all ages and abilities. Contributors are recognized throughout the year, including acknowledgement in the Sparks Parks and Recreation Seasonal Activity Guides and online. More than 28,000 hours of volunteer service were provided through Partners in Parks and Recreation last year alone. This is an equivalent to almost 10 full-time positions valued at $600,000 in salaries and benefits. These are positions that could not be funded in current economic conditions. Community efforts directed to the city's 590-plus acre park system alone have been invaluable in allowing the city to keep the river clean and our parks open and inviting to visitors and residents. Numerous community projects were completed this past year that targeted park needs that may otherwise have gone unmet. Just a few examples include Mars Pet Care refurbishment of the dog park at the Sparks Marina, which included repainting the entire fence and fixing panels that had been in disrepair and compromised our ability to keep the park open. Many Boy Scouts and Eagle Scouts completed their program projects through our park system by accomplishing much-needed weather sealing of wood play structures, which lengthens the life of the equipment. More than 28 parks, park sites, which is an all-time high, were adopted by community groups as part of the longstanding Adopt a Park program. This number represents 48% of the park system. Through the volunteer assistance provided by collaborative efforts with organizations such as Keep Truckee Meadows Beautiful, community cleanups have been helped, have helped keep illegal dump sites under control, and programs such as Adopt a Spot have kept medians and sides of roads clean. Summit Christian Church conducted two large-scale cleanups, bringing 500 volunteers into the parks this past year. The addition of park amenities such as the grant-funded Neos equipment recently installed at the recreation park would not have been possible without the support of the Rotary Club of Sparks and the E.L. Cord Foundation. We did have our ribbon-cutting ceremony this morning for that real fun, interactive play equipment. I want to thank Mr. Schmidt for joining us, and he played a good game. There are numerous volunteers who provide their time and talent to teach children valuable life skills through youth sports programs such as basketball and football, and there are chorus citizens who give their time to help the special events. In order to provide programming for all abilities, organizations such as N.J. Redfield Foundation along with the E.L. Cord Foundation continue to step up and provide the support needed to allow people with disabilities to take part in a range of recreational outlets. So, the list is long, and if you'll bear with me, I'd just like to take this opportunity to give public acknowledgement for the many partners, and then there are a few in the audience with us today that I would like to present certificates to, or Gino, if you would like to do that, that would be great. We've got the Academy of Arts, Careers, and Technology who adopt a park, local radio station Alex, Alice, 96.5 for Turkey Trot, Annie McDowell, who's a flag football coach, Angela Fuze, partner donation, and she is also volunteers her time to serve on the Parks and Recreation Commission. We have various donations, I'm not going to go through all of them, it's so hard. Bering Boulevard Veterinary Hospital, Adopt a Park Big O's on Pyramid Way, Big O Tires, they adopt a park. Boys and Girls Club at Truckee Meadows, for example, they adopt not only Ardmore Park, but they also conduct the teen center, which is called the Club, in the Larry D. Johnson Community Center, and they offer youth sports volunteer assistance through coaching. Boy Scouts Troop Montan is in the Adopt a Park program. Various coaches include Brad Durski, Brad Jensen, Brad Riles, Brent Houston, Brian Farrell, Brian Holt, and Casey Jaggers. You know, this list goes on and on, and I, you know what, just reading one page, I'm sure I'm not going to be able to go through all of this, so we will definitely do full acknowledgement through letters and certificates for them through the mail to thank them. We've invited our partners to either attend today's meeting or the Parks and Recreation Commission meeting, which is on July 23 for public acknowledgement. And so if I call your name or your organization, if you could come forward, and we'll give you your certificate and maybe a photo opportunity. I'd like to start with Dory Guy. Dory is a Parks and Recreation Commissioner for many years, and we thank you for her service. Thank you, Gino. Next, we have Marie Hoofd, who has been a longstanding member of the Sparks Youth Sports Foundation, and before that, Sparks Fast Pitch. Marie was instrumental in fundraising to get the fast pitch fields that we now have at Shadow Mountain. Jeremy Roth with Centennial Little League. Is Jeremy here today?
Yes.
Great. Thank you, Jeremy, for coming today. Jeremy is the president of the Centennial Little League in Sparks, provides a lot of sports and baseball to our youth. Nathan Daniel is with us today with the Truckee Meadows Parks Foundation. We appreciate his volunteer efforts and contributions toward the protection of parks in our region and in Sparks. April Wirth is with us on behalf of the City of Reno Parks, Recreation, and Community Services. We want to thank her for her tireless effort in providing quality parks as well as programs for people with disabilities in our region. Thank you, April.
We'd like to acknowledge people from the city of Reno, right?
Yes. [laughing] It's been a great collaborative effort. Is, I don't know if Carl is here with South Reno Athletic Club. Carl is a volunteer through our special events. Kyle Bateson with Living Stones Church. Living Stones Church really stepped up a few years ago and has been a strong volunteer group for our hometown Christmas and other events. Thank you. And Dan Echols, I'm sorry, is Dan Echols here? Dan is one of our NFL flag football coaches who volunteers his time, and I'm not sure if we have any representatives from Reno Rodeo Foundation or Reno Rodeo Association today. We want to thank them for their lease agreement and all their volunteer efforts to help us maintain the Gandalf Rodeo Arena. We couldn't keep that facility open without their efforts. So that was just a real short list. We're going to continue these efforts to recognize the many people that help us do what we do and really push these efforts out during the month of July. Thank you.
Thanks, Tracy. Any questions or comments for Tracy? Thanks, Trace, appreciate it. Good job. Thanks to all you volunteers, I appreciate that, too. Okay, next is consent items. Everybody want to pull a consent item? Not looking for a motion? Ms. Ratty.
Moved to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Mr. Smith.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Smith to approve the consent items 5-1 through 5-3. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passage unanimously. Okay, moving on to 6.1, presentation, discussion, and possible approval of an inter-local agreement for emergency medical services oversight between the City of Sparks, City of Reno, Washoe County Health District, Washoe County, and the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District through itself, and the Sierra Fire Protection District to create a regional emergency medical oversight function for the management, measurement, and improvement of emergency medical services. Mr. Driscoll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of the council, Steve Driscoll, your city manager, for the record, this is This is the last step in a process that we've been working on for a while in the region related to the TRI-DATA study that was contracted by Washoe County to look at the emergency medical services for the valley. And as a result of the TRI-DATA study, three things came out. There were three major goals that were shared with you in your October 10th, 2012 concurrent meeting, and that was to fix dispatch, to open the REMZA franchise agreement, and to develop an emergency medical agency that had authority and oversight for the three major governmental partners in the valley. To that extent, a large project ensued. There was a lot of discussions, a lot of guidance and policy from this elected body as well as the other elected bodies in the valley. And as a result, the 38 recommended changes in the TRI-DATA study have been implemented if we approve this today. This would be the last of what was out there. And so as a result of the work that's been done, we've done an awful lot of work on our communication systems. They are working through the Tiburon System and the system that REMZA has to do computer-aided dispatch, to computer-aided dispatch, and that project's just getting started on some things. REMZA's franchise agreement, which was an evergreen agreement, which we really had no input to, has now been renegotiated, and it actually, it's a 16-year agreement that has some extensions available. And as a result of this oversight committee, which is contemplated in that franchise agreement, this elected body through its manager would actually have a voice into the agreement, which is a sole agreement between the Health District and REMZA, the private provider. So this gives us some standardization and some oversight that allows us to try to be as consistent as we can with the equipment and the training and the personnel and the protocols that we do and coordinate the medical oversight that the six agencies that we have today work through and go from there. So, there is one, kind of a couple of things that are, I think, are important. There will be some additional cost to the Health District to implement this oversight program. There will be some staff members that are currently on staff or will be hired to do the reporting of the performance measures, to oversee what's going on per the new finance and the new franchise agreement. And the amount of data that we'll be collecting, instead of it being a global set, it'll actually come down to, in Sparks's instance, very specific breakdown of our fire districts so that we can actually see what's going on in the district or sub-district. And that'll be being reported on, on a regular basis. But that additional cost is being shared between the Health District and REMZA themselves. So, 12.5% of the total cost of the program will be subsidized by REMZA, which originally, when we talked about it, it was going to be a percentage of the cost increase. We worked out the dollars are about the same, but just having to be the total. So we have a fiscal buy-in. There was lots of discussion as to whether or not the franchise agreement should have had some type of franchise fee, which is very difficult to do for the type of business and the amount of collections. And so we thought this, under your policy direction, was a better way to take care of the oversight from that standpoint. And so with that, I'm prepared to answer any questions, and I would solicit, Ms. Ratty, since she sits on the board of the Health District, if she had anything to add that maybe I missed in my presentation, I could seek her counsel on that.
Julia?
I continue to believe that, particularly considering where we started, that this is immense progress forward. I don't think that there's a perfect system, but what I'm really excited about is two to three years from now, well, sooner, but, but as you look on in the near horizon, that we will actually have the information necessary to make sure that we are meeting the EMS needs of our communities. And that sharing of data between both the REMZA system and our fire systems and the ability to look at one incident or all of the incidents globally and know who's arriving first, for example, what happened within one incident between handoffs, all of those kinds of things, are going to change our ability to improve the system and work together a little bit more collaboratively. So I, I'm very excited, you know, like everybody, there's a few things I would have liked to see which is slightly different, but, but I think that the end product is a really good product, and I hope we'll support it.
And, Mr. Mayor, I'd be remiss if I didn't note that we actually have Kevin Dick, who is our health officer, who is responsible for managing the franchise agreement, and he has staff with him, that they're doing the day-to-day work and the reporting. We actually, even before the new start date of July 1st, with the new franchise agreement, started collecting data and are already working with that. There are some general concerns that we have that the Oversight Committee will take on, and so the data is being gathered so we can take a hard look at that, some of the first things first, and then drive ourselves forward.
Mr. Lawson?
Well, having read the REMZA agreement when I first got elected, I thought there's no way in heck that this thing would ever be revised. And I got to tell you, REMZA and the three entities getting together, making this thing work, and the Health Department, I commend all of you for the due diligence and the hard work. And I know it wasn't easy, and like Julia, not everything's perfect, but it's pretty darn close, so it's something we can live with, and we really have a real partnership now instead of a dictatorship. I love that part of it. So, congratulations to everybody involved, and very, very well done.
Mr. Lawson, that was really made possible by the management team that this elected body authorized. Mr. Dick, as the new health officer, was really important in that, and your previous Sparks city manager was the chair of the committee and really was a driving force to bring a lot of those issues to consensus. So I think it's important to give him credit for, you know, pushing that through, getting your approval, and driving it to closure. So it was a pleasure working with that process.
Yeah, for me, this is, it's been, it's been a long tedious process, I think, but Julia's been here how long, been working on this for how long, and pushing, and pushing, and pushing, and I really appreciate her, what do I want to say, stick-tuitiveness, or whatever you want to call it.
That's a good word.
It is, yeah. It's better than some that I could come up with, probably, but I think it describes what, what she's done for this process, and thank you for bringing up Sean Carey's name. He was the chairman of the committee. And again, with all of you guys and Mr. Dick and the people from Washoe County and Reno and everyone together, and REMZA especially, probably didn't have to do this, but I think in the long run saw what it meant to this community to get this thing done. So, I appreciate all their help. So, Julia?
Yeah, and I, we cannot take another step farther without also acknowledging the leadership of the Fire Department, Chief Garrison and his team currently, and Chief Flock and his team before him, because I think without, I wouldn't have had the information and the, the, well, really, the coaching that I needed to figure out what exactly might make the system better. And they have been strong advocates for making sure that, not that we get a better position for fire, but that we get a better system for the community. So I really do want to commend the leadership of the Fire Department as well.
Yes, ma'am. They were absolutely focused on patient care, and the rest of it, they saw as just opportunities to make change, and so they were certainly the strongest driver, and thank you for acknowledging them.
Okay, any other questions? If not looking for a motion? Ms. Ratty?
No. It was not in the right place.
She's been tenacious.
Tenacious until it's time to make the motion, apparently.
See what I'm gonna tell you, she's sticking to it.
There I am, got it. I move to approve an interlocal agreement for emergency medical services oversight between the City of Sparks, the City of Reno, Washoe County Health District, Washoe County, and the Truckee Meadows Fire Protection District through itself and the Sierra Fire Protection District to create a regional emergency medical oversight function for the management, measurement, and improvement of emergency medical services as presented by staff.
Mr. Lawson?
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Ratty, seconded by Councilman Lawson to approve 6.1 as outlined by staff. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously.
Great. 6.2, discussion and possible action on the selection of a topic for the City of Sparks bill draft request for the 78th session of the Nevada Legislature.
Mr. Driscoll?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be playing, taking the role of your PIO Government Affairs Manager today. As you know, Mr. Mayberry's going to be out for a short while, he's trying to improve some things, and we'll go forward from there. It's kind of time and place, we've had a couple of discussions in previous meetings related to the city's single bill draft request for the 2015 legislative session. The deadline to submit such BDRs is September 2nd, and with us not having a meeting at the end of the month, we felt that it would be important to come back and address the council. At this point, there has been no particular discussion from the council about any one topic. The Nevada League of Cities has developed their list that they're working on. There are several issues that we would be happy to have them lead on, things like changing prevailing wage depreciation, and some of those, also tax, what would be the equivalent of a sales tax on services, which we don't currently have. Those are all statewide, and they're working those through. It's not been approved by their board, but they are whittling down their list, and they will have done so before the September 2nd submission deadline. We did have a request from our charter committee to see if, if your body would actually carry the bill that's necessary to change the Sparks Charter for those issues related to the Supreme Court findings on the municipal court case that is, recognizes their independent powers and the things that would be necessary for them to operate within the city as their own sole function based on separation of powers from that standpoint. So, that request is still in front of you, and they are hoping that if you do not have another topic, that you would be willing to sponsor that one. It is consistent with prior years, it's been a little while since this body has actually had a BDR that was related to the charter, but we have done it for operational things such as this one in the past, and we can work ourselves forward from there. So, with that, I'd be willing to entertain any discussion that the council would like to bring forward as its own BDR, or if not, to have a determination whether this body is willing to sponsor the Charter Committee's need for a bill in front of the legislature in 2015.
Question, Mr. Carrigan?
Thanks. Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me, Steve. When you read this, it says the parties jointly recommended change to the city council. Who were the parties that did that? Because I couldn't figure out who the parties were.
It's the city and the court are the ones that were suggesting the changes that went in front of the Charter Committee. And then, the Charter Committee, through its chair, through Mr. Mayberry, is the one that has brought the request for the council to carry that particular language change to true up what the Supreme Court suggested, well, through, through an actual case, suggested that we would have to make those changes to make our charter meet their findings.
Okay, and on the same lines, it said the parties did not address the court's ruling on the budget. Can, can you refresh my memory on what they said about the budget?
Basically, the budget was stated that it has a process, that the council is the body that establishes the budget, establishes the spending that's inside the budget. The court had originally asked in their case, if I remember it correctly, that we would just provide a lump sum, and then they would manage it however they wanted to manage it. Your finance director, in a fairly lengthy memo to the court and their attorney, defined state law, both through NRS and NEC, the Administrative Code, and explained the processes, who's responsible for what, how it works, and provided the detail of how it would go. As of the last conversation on that topic, the court recognized that the Nevada Supreme Court operates under those same rules and regulations with the Nevada Legislature, and so from a budget standpoint, they recognized that for wherever reasonable, at a request to establish an original budget, that the council would review that and do the best they could to meet that based on the overall needs of the city. And then, once a budget was established, if the court determined that it had a need that was not contemplated in the budget cycle, that they would have the ability to bring a business case forward, present it to the council, and the council would not unreasonably hold that back based on the need that would go forward. So, it's following all of the rules that are established by the legislature, and it's acting the same as other state agencies with their separation of powers, and we'd be doing the same thing here.
So, we don't think it's to our best interest to make, to mention that in our charter? That we're following that? Or is it assumed that we're going to follow state law? Because, I mean, this is what got us in here in the first place.
Well, I think...
And the reason I bring it up is because later on, there's three changes in there that have to do with money. Okay? And it basically says that the administrative jump can appoint a court administrator, and the city council may appropriate the money. Now, that's not shall, so unless I'm wrong, may means we can or cannot, right? Isn't that right, Chet?
Yeah.
Yeah, Mr. Carrigan, if I may, in the, in the current charter, it's similar language. It's similar to a couple of other appointed positions, that the charter calls out that that position will in fact exist under the charter for the city, and it also suggests that any compensation given to that appointed position is done through a pay ordinance that's approved by the council. So it'd be similar to what you do related to your city manager, what you do for the court administrator, and you do for other appointed positions in the city.
And when was the last time the city council carried forward a charter bill? Do you remember? Because I thought we had a hands-off policy with our charter committee.
You do to, you do to an extent.
No, I mean, it's, it's not written in law, but I know that the city council, since I've been on it, has a hands-off policy. In other words, we don't go in front of them very often and try to lobby them for something. I mean, they, you know, we leave them as their own entity. And in that, if that's the case, I really don't want to carry their charter bill. I mean, there's employed, there's appointees in our charter committee from every one of our legislators, can't we get one of them to carry it?
And we have done that in the past.
That's, I thought, since I've been here, I thought we've been that way.
We did actually carry forward our own, we did do our bill that was related to this through, in 2009, where it was related specifically to room tax. It's been quite a while. Pretty much the last time, we had carried it a couple of times back in the early 2000s. There was a point where the Charter Committee contemplated salary increases for the council and for the mayor, and at that point, the council chose to not associate themselves with that bill, they felt that there was a potential conflict. And from that point forward, the types of bills that have come through, quite a few of them were operational-based from their point of view, not necessarily from the council's point of view. And so the council has allowed them, since they are their own separate entity, they did have sponsors that were willing to come forward, so they carried them forward, because they typically were not of the nature of this one, where you have the Supreme Court telling the city that they will change their charter, and they're doing it this way, and so it's, it's a little more direct, operational. And with that, I could, I could have the city attorney weigh in if he'd like as to, as to why it's, it is compatible this time versus some of the...
Well, you know, that, I think that's our call, too. I don't think it's compatible, because if you have in here that we may or may not increase somebody's salary, I think that's, and if we decide to carry it forward, I think that we're butting our nose right in the middle of the charter committee. That's my own feeling, but I think we have enough legislators to be able to carry this forward, that we don't have to use our one city's BDR to do it. That's just my...
And the Charter Committee, Mr. Carrigan, through the mayor, they do recognize that if the council for any reason chooses not to carry this, that they will be going to require to go find a sponsor, and they believe that they can do that, and they can do it at a time frame...
Well, I hope so, I mean, there, you know, there's enough appointees from our legislators. Hope they can.
Five of the twelve.
Mr. Lawson?
Are we finished with the court, with lawsuits with the court at this point?
No, sir, we are not. We are working with your outside legal counsel. There is currently several documents to try to bring it to closure, which is addressing all of the outstanding issues that are not contemplated within the charter. And so it is in its draft stage, it's not ready to be daylighted to the council at this point. It will have to be before it's, before it's finished, but it, it's a working document that's probably 80% complete.
When do we have to submit a BDR? What's the last date for it?
The last date for the city to be the submitter would be September 2nd, as they're normally do on September 1st, but that is a holiday this year. So it has to be in the proper format... So, it has to be in the proper format that's accepted by the Legislative Council Bureau, submitted to them no later than close of business on the 2nd of September.
When do we anticipate being finished with the lawsuits? Before that date, or it's going to be after?
We'd have no way to, I don't even know how to comment.
I'm just a little leery of moving forward until we get this whole issue settled. This is my worries at this point.
I don't know that we have a choice to move ahead or not. We've been directed by the Supreme Court, have we not?
For these issues, yes.
Got to be done, got to be taken care of. I don't mind us carrying it in this particular respect. It doesn't bother me, because we've been told by the Supreme Court that we have to do it. So, in other respects, I remember the things that we looked at before. I agree we shouldn't have carried, we didn't. So, I don't have a problem with this one, because we've been directed to do it. Ms. Ratty.
Yeah, I don't have a problem either, not only because we've been directed by the Supreme Court, but also because we've been requested by the charter committee. So, I think that we've kept a hands-off approach of not intervening, but when the charter committee comes to us and says, "Well, you carry this for us," because it's something that the Supreme Court is directing you to do, I don't see us as being overbearing or throwing our weight around with the charter committee. And I think that frankly, the intervening piece has been gray. I mean, I remember all of us sitting here, well, not all, most of us sitting here in the audience with the charter committee when we were talking about word-only voting, and we were relatively engaged on that issue. So, this one, to me, makes far more sense if we're being requested.
Mr. Schmidt.
I believe the instance with when we were invited by the charter committee to talk on the subject of one word, that they invited us to come and talk to them about that. We did not impose ourselves on the charter committee. And I think for the general public, when we hear the words lawsuit, we have to understand, the public needs to know what this lawsuit's all about. And I don't think that most of the citizens of the City of Sparks know that a group of employees sued the city. One department in the city sued the city. It cost us a quarter of a million dollars already, and that's why we're doing this. My question comes down fundamentally, if you're a party to a lawsuit, do you then initiate legislative action to go ahead and solve that? I think that that is something that, you know, the court's decided, you know, told us how we're going to do things. Charter committee's responsible for the charter, and we're a party to that lawsuit. I think it's best for us to stand back and let the charter committee do their stuff that they need to do, because this is not something, I don't think there's really any people that totally agree with this thing, at least on this council. And I think that for me to vote to say, "Well, I want to go to sponsor this bill," would mean that I would agree to the outcome of the lawsuit. And I think it's fundamentally flawed, and the taxpayers of the City of Sparks are going to pay dearly for this in the years to come.
Okay, as to carrying the charters, are we agendized to vote on this or make a decision, Chet, do you think? It's like the selection of a topic for the City of Sparks' bill draft request. So, are we okay to have a motion to vote on it, Chet?
You can. It seems to be pretty permissive as far as the agenda item itself. And you can either choose to, there's been a lot of discussion as to whether or not to carry this, and that's all the city council's looking at at this point in time.
Okay. Further discussion, Ms. Ratty.
So, I did just want to ask that question. So, the charter committee asked us to do this?
Based on the action that they took to meet the goals and objectives that the attorneys from both sides suggested needed to be changed in the charter to meet the Supreme Court's findings and ruling, when the charter committee resolved that to the satisfaction of the two attorneys, which is attorney for the court on behalf of the court, and attorney for the city on behalf of the city, all the language is set, it's ready to go, they approved it, and then they are looking for a sponsor.
So, they specifically asked us--
They specifically asked us if we were not using our BDR for anything else, if we would be willing to carry it on their behalf, because it was directly related to us. If it is the pleasure of this council to say no thank you, then they'll be obligated to go find a legislator or someone else who has a BDR authority that would be proper to then submit and lobby that bill on their behalf.
So, because they have, this other independent body has specifically asked us to do this, I believe that they deserve an answer, so I'm going to make a motion, and we'll just see where it goes. I move to submit the proposed amendments to the city charter adopted by the City, the Sparks Charter Committee, to the Legislative Council Bureau as the city's sole BDR.
Do we have a second for discussion?
Okay.
Okay, motion dies for lack of a second. Mr. Smith.
You know, I think the key to this is, we still have two more meetings before we have to submit the BDR. I would suggest that we ask them to find somebody else, or if we come up with another BDR that we're interested in, then we can tell them to go find someone else. I don't disagree that it's got to go in by somebody, but it doesn't have to be us.
Yes, it has to be somebody.
Go ahead.
I think that leaving any lingering hope that we're going to do it out there probably makes some sense, because we're getting to the time period that legislators are going to have to be choosing what bills they're going to be submitting. Junior legislators will have fewer, senior legislators will have more, but I think if the charter committee's not going to have us bring it forward, they need to start talking to legislators now--
Now, right, yeah.
So, I'd rather not delay it, and just say to the charter committee, "Go find a sponsor." Which is, to me, what we're doing.
I think that's the better course, yeah. I think that's the better course, to give them a chance to find a legislator to carry it. So, can we direct that, or you want a motion to that effect, Steve?
Just some clarification, Mr. Mayor. For us to, if we were to do a BDR that's not the charter BDR, because it's ready to go, for us to do a BDR, we would need to settle on that topic no later than the first meeting of August, because we'll need help writing the language and looking at whatever we're looking to do. And the attorney's office will have to scramble to provide you with that support, because it would have to be approved in final form no later than the last meeting of August, so that it could be submitted by September 2nd. So, your direction is fine. We can follow that direction. We can inform, if we go that direction, we would inform the charter committee that they need to find a sponsor, and we would let them know that if they're not successful, they would have to report back at least to me, so I could report, because there will be an agenda item for BDR on the first meeting of August. So, I could bring that to you at that point in time.
And I think the other thing, by then, Mr. Driscoll, we will have a good idea of what the League of Cities is going to do, because instead, they're meeting with all staffs coming up next week, I believe, and then the week after that, they're meeting again with the board to choose their five. So, then, by that time, we'll know exactly what they're going to carry, and if there's some things that they don't carry that we want to look at, then we'll have a chance to do that, too, I believe.
That's consistent with my understanding, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Lawson.
I'm just leery about us carrying it with the loose ends still, the lawsuits out there. So, that's my reason for not wanting to do it with the council.
Okay. Anyone else, any further discussion? You got all you need, Steve?
I believe that I have. The direction that I've received is to inform the charter committee that at this time, the council would prefer that they find a different sponsor, and that I will agendize on the meeting for August 11th, I believe is the date. We'll do BDR one more time, and we'll determine if the council has anything, and we'll have gathered all the information from other folks like League of Cities as best we can. And that'll be our last chance to go whichever direction the council would like to go.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
So, I'll take that as direction.
Appreciate it. Moving on to 6.3, consideration possible approval of the reappointment of Art Spurber to the Regional Planning Commission. Questions?
Mr. Carrigan.
Thank you, Mayor. I move to confirm the mayor's recommendation to reappoint Art Spurber to the Chucky Meadows Regional Planning Commission. Their term expires June 30th, 2017.
Mr. Smith.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Carrigan, seconded by Mr. Smith, to approve Art Spurber for the Regional Planning Commission. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. 6.4 is consideration and possible acceptance of forensic support services agreement between the Washtere County Sheriff's Office and the Sparks Police Department. Chief Allen, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Today, we bring before you, well, we bring before you about every two years or so, which is the agreement with the Sparks Police Department and the Washtere County Sheriff's Office for our forensic investigatory support. If we look at this item with the original bill that's submitted, with the sheriff's office, we're in excess of $550,000 to $575,000. And we've been able to negotiate over the last few years to continue to increase our support, but not meet the full amount of the bill. During this two-year contract cycle, it would continue the same way we have the last two contracts, increasing the contract by $35,000 each year, for a total of $319,500 fiscal year 15, and $354,550 fiscal year 16. Again, this is for all of our forensic support, including DNA, toxicology, control substance analysis--
Not as much--
firearms and trace evidence. If you have any questions, I'd be willing to answer.
Questions for Chief Allen. Okay, if not, looking for a motion. Mr. Lawson, go ahead.
So, we're increasing our support, because that's what it is.
Yes.
If we don't pay them, they'd still have to do it anyways.
They do. They would. But we are increasing or reducing the amount they are subsidizing us on a yearly basis.
Or we're increasing our support.
Yes.
Either which way you put it, same $35,000 bucks--
Yes.
--per year.
Yes.
So, this has gone up $70,000 in two years, so--
For two years. And our original bill's about $560,000 or so.
It's a bargain.
I know, but there was no accounting on how that bill came about either. I remember when I first saw it, it was, "Here's your bill." I could have written that up myself, but, all right. Thank you.
Questions? Okay, looking for a motion. Mr. Schmidt.
Just a comment. You know, I'm tired of fighting this thing for years. You know, I think I pay county taxes, one-third of my property taxes, 70% of the sales taxes go to the county. I'd expect the county sheriff to provide services to us, and we don't get any services from the county for, to, you know, a little bit of here now and then, but I don't think our taxes cover what the, I think our taxes go for the residents of unincorporated areas of the city. And I think that that's part of what we are, deal is for the sheriff's department to provide services to the city. It's only $300,000, but it's $35,000 that could go up every single year. That's a 10% cost of increases. That's unacceptable, but I'm tired of fighting it. I'm just going to maybe put on the record that I think this is wrong.
They're writing a lot more tickets than Spark.
Yes, they are. Mr. Smith.
I'd like to make a motion.
Go for it.
I move to approve the forensic support services agreement with the Washtere County Sheriff's Department.
Ms. Ratty.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve 6.4. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
6.5, consideration possible approval of a contract to Houston Smith Construction, Inc., for the GURP restroom and storage building project in the total amount of $284,900. Brian.
Good afternoon, Mayor, and members of the city council. For the record, my name is Brian Kason, Acting Capital Projects Manager for the City of Sparks. I am here today to present the Golden Eagle Regional Park restroom and storage building project for consideration and possible approval of a contract with Houston Smith Construction. I've got a map up here just to kind of give you guys the location of it. This is out at Golden Eagle Regional Park, and it will serve primarily the multipurpose fields and the soccer fields, which are right in between the softball fields and the baseball fields up there. The project includes the construction of a masonry building that matches the current architectural style at the park, and includes a men's and women's restroom, along with two storage facilities and three drinking fountains. There were six bids submitted for the project. Houston Smith Construction was the lowest responsive bidder, so staff recommends it. The award of a contract with Houston Smith Construction for this project. With that being the end of my presentation, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Okay, Mr. Smith.
Just a comment. You know--
Yeah.
I know we need restrooms out there, but I could buy a pretty nice house for $284,000.
Yeah. They're--
I think because we're the government, they tend to take advantage of us, and that's tough. That's a tough nut to crack.
Yeah.
And that was the lowest bid.
That was the lowest bid.
What was the engineer's bid?
The engineer's estimate was $245,000.
So, it's over that.
But that actually did not include the force account that I have in there. So, really, the engineer's estimate with the force account was $260,000, so we're about $20,000 over.
So, what's the square footage of this beautiful restroom?
Uh, right around $1,000 square feet, I believe. Pretty close to $1,000 square feet. And the last one that was done for the Little League fields was, came in at like $245,000, I believe.
We could go out there on a weekend and build one.
Yeah.
Health department might have a little problem with that, but this is space age.
Yeah.
Mr. Carrigan.
I was going to go ahead and make a motion, and I was going to basically say it was probably the most expensive bathroom that I've ever voted on also, but Ron took him in the thunder. But that being said, I make a motion to approve the contract to Houston Smith for a total amount of $284,900.
Mr. Schmidt.
I'll second it with comments.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Carrigan, seconded by Mr. Schmidt. Questions? Go ahead, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. This one, I'm going to defend a contractor on, because I've done some of these parking rest bathrooms before, and you're going to buy your toilet in your house, it's probably anywhere from $70 to $300 bucks that you could buy a pretty nice toilet. If you want to go buy a stainless steel, non-destructible toilet, you're probably in a $5,000 or $6,000 range. Do that times six or seven of what you need. Just go buy the mirror in the bathroom that you got to have, it's probably $1,000 bucks. So, $268,000 in public for a bathroom is probably not that bad. You should be more worried about the theft of the things that are going to go in there than the $268,000 bucks.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Thanks, Brian.
Thank you.
6.6, review and acceptance of an agreement with Children's Cabinet, Inc., for a grant in the amount of $29,700 effective July 1, 2014 to June 30, 2015. Welcome, ladies.
Good afternoon. I'm Mayor and councilmembers. I'm Tanya Nelson, Recreation Supervisor. This is Tanya Ramashetty, Recreation Specialist. This is just a grant that we receive annually for childcare. It helps subsidize the kids that, the families that need a little help paying the cost of their before and after school care.
Great stuff by the Children's Cabinet. Questions? Ms. Ratty.
I have a question. I was just, since we do this every year, I'm assuming people are going to be pretty comfortable with it. I move to accept the 2014-15 memorandum of agreement with the Children's Cabinet, Inc., for a grant of $29,700 as presented by staff.
Mr. Smith.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Mr. Smith, to approve 6.6, the agreement with the Children's Cabinet, Inc. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passed unanimously. Great job, ladies.
Thank you.
Really, really, really good.
The further this was, I was standing.
It was. 6.7, consideration and possible approval of Resolution Number 3260, authorizing the execution. That sounds pretty final. Keep going. The execution of a waiver and consent agreement in connection with the issuance of the redevelopment agency of the City of Sparks, Nevada.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. It's not that bad. Execution, in this context, is going to be a good thing. The redevelopment agency I'm going to bring forward during the redevelopment agency meeting is looking to pursue a refunding of one of our outstanding debt that we issued in 2009. But in order to pursue that, we need a waiver and consent agreement entered into between the city, the redevelopment agency, and the developer regarding the DDFA, Development Disposition Financing Agreement, for the Legends project. All that's going to do is allow basically this, essentially this refunding to happen. We issued a waiver and consent agreement when we issued the bonds in 2009, so this is just in the same spirit, and we're just going to be refunding those 2009 issuances with no other real changes to the development or the agreement related to the issuance, but it's something that we need to do to pursue the refunding. So, if that makes any sense, I'll answer any questions.
Questions, Mr. Carrigan.
Exactly, just to put it on the record, are we wavering?
Anything that's essential just to, related to this issuance of the refunding. Nothing related to development-- Nothing related to the development itself, other than that particular issuance for those bonds. So, it's essentially allowing those bonds to be refunded.
Okay, and so this, we're doing this to save, obviously, some interest, is that correct?
Right.
And how much is that going to save?
About $1.5 million over the course of the lifetime of the remaining debt, without extending the debt or anything like that. It's basically just getting a new interest rate.
And what year is, what year are the bonds called? What's the...
Well, it'll be effective in August. We'll close escrow, is what we're pushing to do.
Okay, and then, and what's the end?
And then it'll mature in 2029.
Okay.
So, essentially, the end of the Redevelopment Area Two, when it terminates, is essentially when it goes out. And then I did float this by the attorneys at Redevelopment, and they're fully on board wanting to support the city in this endeavor.
Mr. Schmidt?
Is that replacing bonds that are due right now?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
What's the due date of the bonds right now?
Same, June 2029.
Okay, so all, so basically, we're just refinancing the bonds, same time for just a lower interest rate?
That's correct.
And this, is this debt to the city that we're, that we have?
No, this is a Redevelopment Agency issuance.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, the Redevelopment Agency.
But the city needs to enter into this three-party agreement for the waiver in order to pursue the reissuance, or the refunding.
Who else is this advantageous to besides the Redevelopment Agency?
Well, the city, particularly if there ever, you know, comes into place where we had previously, you know, where the city had to support the Redevelopment Agency, you know, obviously, that, that helps in that endeavor, but primarily, this is a Redevelopment Agency benefit, if you will.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? Looking for a motion? Mr. Smith?
I move to approve Resolution Number 3260, authorizing the execution of the waiver and consent agreement in connection with the issuance of the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Sparks, Nevada, Subordinate Lean Tax Increment Revenue Refunding Bonds, Series 2014.
Well said. Ms. Ratty?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Smith, seconded by Councilwoman Ratty, to approve 6.7, Resolution Number 3260. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. Go ahead and execute. 6.8 is the first reading of Bill Number 2678.
Bill Number 2678, An Ordnance Amending Title 20 of the Sparks Municipal Code, Section 20.5, Six Signs to Change the Method for Sign Calculations to Add Regulations Governing Digital Signs and Providing Other Matters Properly Related There Too.
This is the first reading for Bill Number 2678. The public hearing and second reading of this bill will be conducted at the regular City Council meeting on Monday, August 11, 2014. Public hearing items, 7.1, second reading, public hearing, discussion, and possible action on Bill Number 2677, amending the Sparks Municipal Code to align the code with changes made by the RSCVA and with changes made in the Nevada Revised Statutes and providing other matters properly related thereto. Go ahead, sir.
Good afternoon, Wayne Weber, Senior Accountant, for the record. What we have here is some wording to align our municipal code with Reno and Washoe County. And I'm here to answer any questions if you have any.
Questions for Wayne?
Just what are the changes that were...
Basically, we're changing the wording from, we are removing, where we have having three or more units for rent, we're taking that out.
So, it's any units?
Any units.
Okay.
Ms. Ratty?
Move to adopt Bill Number 26...
Whoop, 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 we've got a public hearing, I'm sorry.
Oh, sorry, sorry, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, this is a public hearing, I have to open it to the public. Anyone want to speak on this particular item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to council. Ms. Ratty?
Move to adopt Bill Number 2677 to amend Chapter 3 of the Sparks Municipal Code.
Mr. Smith?
Second.
We have a motion by Ms. Ratty, seconded by Mr. Smith, to approve Bill Number 2677, amending the Sparks Municipal Code. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes unanimously. 7.2 has been pulled. Number 8.1, consideration of possible action on a request for tentative and final approval of an amendment to a Plan Development Handbook, Kylie Ranch South, to revise the development standards by adding to the permitted uses for parcel 11E or 2E of lending institution per NRS 604A. Ms. Melby?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. Karen Melby, Senior Planner. Before you today is a review of a tentative and final handbook amendment to the Plan Development Handbook of the Kylie Ranch South, to revise this development standards by adding permitted uses to parcel 2E of the lending institute per NRS 604A. This area in purple is the portion of the Kylie South, which is the 2E section of the handbook. It's also known as Los Altos Crossing Shopping Center. On the site totaling approximately 21.2 acres, which is zoned PD, located at the northeast corner of, which this would be Sparks here, and this is Los Altos, oops, sorry. This would be the drainage coming through Kylie. The request is to amend the list, add to the list of permitted uses for parcel 2E, allowing lending institutes per NRS 604, which is deferred deposits, title loans, and check cashing services. This would allow also businesses, the amendment also would allow businesses that, to have drive-throughs, as long as they're not in parcels 1 through 5, which are these five parcels back here along next to the residential, those parcels are not allowed to have drive-throughs. So, it would restrict the drive-through on the front parcels along Sparks Boulevard. As discussed in the staff report, the staff finds the proposed amendments in compliance with the 21 Plan Development findings, that since the amendment does not change the housing, establishes criteria for drive-throughs already in the handbook, is compatible with the surrounding land use, and does not change any of the development standards within the handbook. As for the final Plan Development Handbook, it's staff's opinion that the final draft amendments for the Kylie South Plan Development Handbook, Section IV, Commercial and Business Parks, do not vary the five criteria as outlined in the NRS. The proposed amendment preserves the integrity of the plan and protects the nearby neighborhood. That concludes my presentation, and staff is recommending approval along with Planning Commission. I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Melby? Ms. Ratty?
So, does the current plan allow for a bank or a credit union?
It allows a bank, but it doesn't allow for lending institutes. NRS defines banks and financial institutions different than a lending institute, and so it was staff's interpretation, though, even though the handbook allows financial institutions right now, that in order for them to do a cash, a check cashing place, they would need to amend the handbook to allow the lending institutes.
So, the distinguishing, distinguishing factor here is that credit union of bank would be allowed, but that this is changing the plan to allow for, because banks and credit unions lend, that's one of the things, but this is just for those businesses whose main purpose is to lend money?
Correct.
So, I'm going to be unable to support this amendment. I've been supportive of some state legislative changes to decrease the number of places that we would have payday loan centers, basically. I believe that they're, that they need to be better regulated, and I don't want to be doing, I don't want to be supporting anything that is allowing for more of those types of businesses. I basically believe that they prey on our community.
Mr. Lawson?
Karen, isn't it true that if they're not specifically named in the first edition of the handbook, you have to go through this process to add another business in there?
That's correct.
So, it really wouldn't matter if it's check cashing, or it's, if it's a grocery store, it's going to have to come back here if it wasn't named in the original handbook.
That's correct, yes. Any, anytime there's a, there is a specific list of uses in this handbook, and if that use does not fall in that list, then they would have, then they have to amend, and that's why the Kylie Ranch handbook, South handbook, we've, we've entertained 15 amendments to this handbook over the time, so this is the 15th amendment to this.
If it wasn't under a handbook, then this company could go anywhere in the City of Sparks.
No.
Well, I mean, within the commercial...
They have to comply with the code, then they have to go back to Title 20, which in our Title 20, they're only, well, they're only in the commercial and also in the industrial areas, in the commercial industrial areas.
Yeah, to have 15 amendments to a handbook seems kind of excessive to me, I don't know how we take care of the future.
Well, this was, yeah, you have to remember that this was also one of the initial handbooks that the City of Sparks did, so it was a learning, had a learning curve with it.
All right, thank you.
Uh-huh.
Any other questions? This is a public hearing, so, open it to the public. Anyone want to speak? Angela, come on up.
Good afternoon, for the record, Angela Foose, CFO, representing the applicant. If I could have maybe Karen point out, there are existing drive-throughs in banks. There's an existing frontier financial right on the corner, which actually has a drive-through, and then there's a drive-through on a vacant building. This one? Exactly, yep. So, there are existing drive-throughs on this facility now. The changes, as part of this amendment, is simply to add the lending, lending institution and to allow drive-throughs. So, there are no drive-throughs allowed on the back, as Karen explained, next to the residential.
Yeah, these five parcels back here don't allow, and there is no proposal to change that.
Correct. So, this only impacts the area that currently has permitted drive-throughs, as long as they're not restaurants or bank-related, but now this will allow restaurant and bank-related drive-throughs. And again, we already have a bank drive-through where it's currently not permitted, we have it as existing. I'm available to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Foose? Mr. Schmidt?
To Mr. Fair. I just want to make sure that it's clear that this also allows drive-through restaurants.
Correct.
Right now, the plan does not call for that, this is expanding to...
Was special use permit, wasn't it? Correct. If you're a restaurant and you want to do a drive-through, you do trigger a special use permit, so this would make it a permitted use, as long as you're fronting Sparks Boulevard.
I agree with, with Ms. Ratty that the, the business of check cashing is, is, you know, a certain type of business that maybe you don't want in your neighborhood, but it also takes in market effects, have those things come and go, you know, if the, if this place opens on up and the neighbors don't want that in there because they're not going to patronize the place, then it's going to be shut down. And I see that all the time. In fact, we have a member of the City Councilman that's going to be out of work because the supply and demand force closes down a, a certain business in a neighborhood, and so I think that we can't just sit down and go ahead and say that because I don't want that business in there that I can't allow it. I think that, you know, people are making investments here and doing that kind of work, and if the community doesn't support it, it won't be here very long.
Okay, anyone else in the public comment? Opposed a public comment, bring it back to council for action. Is this your ward? Mr. Schmidt?
I move to approve a tentative and final handbook amendment, a request for the Kylie Ranch South Plan Development Handbook, associated with PCN 14015, adopted findings PD 1 through PD 21, and the facts supporting these findings set forth in the staff report, because the request includes final approval, the City Council will not require a bond at this time as stated in NRS 278A.490.
Second? Mr. Carrigan?
Second.
Moved by Councilman Schmidt, seconded by Councilman Carrigan, to approve 8.1, PCN 14015. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote. Passes four to one, Ms. Ratty is a no. Okay, thanks, Angela, thanks. Karen? Okay, number nine, do we have a closed-door session, Steve? No?
Not from labor.
Thank you. Comments from the public? Anyone want to speak on the comments from the public? Seeing none, we'll move on to comments from the City Council on City Manager. Mr. Driscoll?
Just, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I just do want to remind you, there will not be a council meeting on July 28, so any business that needs to transpire between now and then will be moved to the August 11 meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else comments? Okay, seeing no further business, we are adjourned.
Okay, I'll call the ordinary Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting for July 14, 2014, with a roll call, please.
Chairman Smith?
Here.
Agency members, Ratty?
Here.
Lawson?
Here.
Martini?
Here.
Carrigan?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Agency Attorney Adams?
Here.
Agency Manager Driscoll?
Here.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Okay, at this time, I'll open up the public. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the agency. Okay, 3.1, consideration and possible approval of the minutes of the regular Sparks Redevelopment Agency meeting for June 23, 2014.
Move to approve, Mr. Chair?
Second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. 4.0, consideration and possible approval of Resolution, this is going to make the meeting go long, where'd he go? Right there. Resolution Number 129, a resolution authorizing the issuance of the Redevelopment Agency of the City of Sparks, Nevada, Subordinate Lean Tax Increment Revenue Refunding Bonds. Hang on. One breath.
Thank you. Jeff Krong, Financial Services Director, for the record. As I stated before, at the city, during the city meeting, this is the proposal that we're pursuing for the refunding of the 2009 debt. With me, I have Marty Johnson, who is our financial advisor. A lot of you haven't seen him yet, because we haven't had a lot of chances to refinance lately, and with the market finally improving, we're starting to see some, some nibbles out there, if you will. We brought before you, for the, for the city, refinancing or refunding reissuance of the C-tax debt, just really a matter of weeks ago, and now we really want to bring this back to, for the agency to consider refunding of the 2009 bond, so I'm happy to, to do that. Marty's done a lot of work beating those bushes over the years, so, you know, we're thrilled to, you know, finally have him, you know, bring some success stories to us, if you will. So, with that, what we have in front of you is a resolution to consider authorization to pursue this. The documents that you saw attached to your agenda item, were all in draft form, those will all be closed either at or before the closing of escrow, which is scheduled for, I believe, August 14. And so, what we're proving, asking for approval right now is just simply the resolution to, again, go ahead and execute those documents and move forward with that. The, at the end of the day, we're looking at essentially a lowering of the interest rate. Right now, those bonds that we issued in 2009 had a range between approximately six, a little bit over six, to seven and three-quarters, and this would lock in an interest rate at three and a quarter. So, significant savings. So, it came out to $1.5 million over the life, the remaining life of the debt, which is about $1.2 million for a net present value saving, so... After the costs. Always after the costs. We always build in our costs. So, with that, I think we're here to entertain any questions you may have.
Any questions? Okay, seeing... Move to approve, Mr. Chair? Okay, seeing none, looking for a motion. We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, comments? I'll open it back up to the public. Anybody in the public wishing to speak at this time? Seeing none, bring it back to the agency. Any comments from the agency? Chief Administrative Officer? Yes, sir, Mr. Driscoll?
Again, similar to the last meeting, there, the, the normal monthly meeting of this agency was moved up to this, because we will not be having a meeting on the 28th, so the next meeting of this body, unless there's a special meeting, would be the second meeting in August.
Okay.
Thank you.